Who do we have from Alderson? Is that Kerry?
Hi Randy, yes, it's Kerry.
Thank you. We got you Johnny.
Thank you.
Fred, did you get an email from Daisy?
No.
Public comment Daisy is supposed to be in advance to me if you want to send it to me real quick at our place or H E U S E R at cityofblueisland.org. I'd appreciate it.
No, who is it?
She just does a mess for to Daisy. Well, I mean, I can talk about my concerns in Blue Island. My neighbor emailed Fred Bellato.
I have no idea. I didn't get anything from a Daisy. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure who Daisy would, any Daisy off the top of my head. So I'm not sure.
Fred, she just said she emailed, or it came from Lisa, her neighbor emailed you.
Are you seeing Mr. City email? I'm not getting anything.
No, it just popped up. It just popped up on the bottom from Daisy to all panelists.
Oh, what is the concern?
I don't know. She emailed you her concerns.
There's a light that's out in a park district. If it's the least I'm thinking of on Market Street. I already called that one in. That's a light that's in Portland Play Lot. It's burned out along with a floodlight and I called it in. ComEd needs to replace those. If that's what you're talking about Daisy, I already got it. If Daisy, you want to email me directly and I can work with you on this. F Bellato at cityofblueisland.org.
Also, there's still a car in the area too.
Yeah, I see it now.
Domingo, it's seven oh three. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, you know what? I can read the, our, our statement and then we can go in. Are you ready?
Randy, I got Nancy saying you gotta let her in.
It's here.
Alright.
Oh, two, I see, okay. It's a different number I didn't recognize.
So can you hear me Randy?
Yes.
Okay. You tell me when.
Go ahead.
Okay. On June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I've determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to the commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified and can be seen and heard by one another. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster. And more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an inaccessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion and roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook and via Zoom teleconference. Notice that these arrangements have been given accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and is adopted by mayoral order. Alderman Candace Carr, a member of this body, is physically present at a regular meeting location. All votes shall be conducted by roll call and a pervading record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. City Clerk, could you read the heading please?
Sure. This is the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Blue Island held remotely on Tuesday, September eighth, twenty-twenty at seven PM. As permitted by Executive Order twenty twenty oh seven, signed by Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzer on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. To participate remotely, download the Zoom app or call three one two six two six six seven nine nine. The city council meeting is on our ID of eight four nine one six eight zero seven four four three with a password of one two four one four four.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible. Mr. City Clerk, could I have roll call please?
Sure. Hazenus.
Here.
Hazenus here. Rita. You're muted. Nancy Rita, are you here? Star six. We'll come back to hear her voice. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald here. Hill.
Here.
Hill here. Mac.
Here.
Mac here. Carr. Carr, you're muted.
Here.
Carr here. Zelman.
Here.
Zelman here. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here. Stevo.
Here.
Stevo here. Johnson. Um, I believe that's him trying to come in now. No. I'll come back to him. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Let me look at, look for one number here real quick. Okay, it's Topeka. That'll get her in a second. So Nancy, Nancy Rita, you're still muted. Are you here? Nancy star six. Well, I'll put her as absent temporarily because I don't, I don't recognize the number and I, I don't. So we have twelve, twelve present this instant, your honor.
Alright, thank you. We'll move on to number four. Presentation of general proceedings. I'll, I'll need a motion to approve the city council minutes to the date of August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. I need a motion in a second.
I'll move to Alderman Fernwald.
Second and.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If no questions, roll call please.
I have a question. Alderman Clinker.
Sure.
Actually, it's a correction. So it's all the way on the last page under Aldermanic announcements. It reads Alderman Clinker asked about the status of the vault and Ravens license suspensions and stated that a meeting is pending for Friday, August twenty-eighth. I, I believe that should be the mayor stated that part. Sounds like I stated it the way I read that.
Okay, I'll, I'll correct that.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. If nothing else, roll call please.
Hazenus.
Saying.
Did you say hi?
I'm saying.
Oh, I'm staying. I'm sorry. I missed it. Um, Rita, are you? Now she's calling. Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Fernwald.
Hi.
Fernwald, hi. Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi. Mac.
Hi.
Mac, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi. Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi. Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi. Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi. Bellato.
Hi.
Why don't I? Eleven eyes and one abstention, your honor.
Alright, thank you. Did we ever get a, was Mr. Alderman Johnson here or no?
No. Johnson, wait a minute. Okay, so now she just went away again. I believe, I believe, I don't have my, my phone in front of me here, but I really had Nancy coming in and out and then Topeka, so that's all we have.
Okay, okay. We move on to number five, public comment. Mr. Clerk, could you read the, the paragraph please?
Sure. Public comment shall be like email only. Person's interested in making a public comment must email their public comment to baronhoiser@cityofblueisland.org by September eighth, twenty-twenty at six PM. Email the public comment received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting by City Clerk Randy Hoiser.
Alright, any comments?
Got four this morning.
Okay.
Dear Mayor Vargas and Alderman Stevo, Phil, that would be enough words to express my own gratitude for your recent actions for getting an alarm turned off over Labor Day weekend. You clearly understood there was more to this matter than just an issue of everyone needing to patiently wait until after the holidays to have it turned off and repaired. After nineteen hours of incessant loud and even painful noise coming from the hospital grounds, it was shut off. Despite ghost sounds coming from my own imagination from time to time for a few hours, whatever actions you took brought peace to a clear case of a business causing a dangerous elongated disturbance of the peace of an audible kind. What was never clear was the path and process to follow to reach those of authority who could take quick action. Which is why I not only turned to the two of you with insistence on help, but I did file a police report and even had a fairly reassuring conversation with a member of the fire department over a variety of elements. Mayor Vargas, I do advise you, I was viewing our short conversation about the matter under the light writing of timeless community policing means and methods. And in this particular situation, now that is over there is a few bit more work to do. Also, Alderman Stevo, I greatly appreciate you being outside on active day and developing a solution to the matter. In other words, I am relieved I chose you to complain the situation rather than Alderman Clinker with the reason my communication efforts in the past. It is your choice of actions that reflect a measurable level of community policing that accomplish an important micro task. If I'm not done and long before the threat of it, the noise continuing until after Labor Day holiday. Now, this, this bigger and out of war jurisdiction, this is a, a very simple issue that many others could get into real trouble over. Imagine if it was the alarm of a home or a car during nonstop for hours or even days. I have a much better family confidence to see as ordinances overseeing such circumstances, but because this is happening on a stone-cold hospital grounds, poof. Now, no one has the capacity or information to make but one phone call to the person, to one person to have it dealt with promptly. As I can, this is equally hold Governor Prister and Charles Everhart of Lockwood Development Partners being just as lax in ensuring such vital and critical safety and security information is in the hands of those who are looking critical to caring for this huge and empty building. Along with large slots of empty parking lots just rotting away. But it's more than that. How many of you on the city council have direct connects to owners of commercial properties or with at least individuals who can be called to action with just one phone call from the city? I'm not talking about breaking into your databases for the data. I'm talking about having solid enough relationships formed from safety and security to have such an exchange of proper means and method to solve a variety of problems that don't need to grow to the level of this alarm situation here. Sadly, the police didn't need to be involved with this matter until this black hole occurred as to who can make the, the kind of call. And the only thing that reported, the report could do was to put a date timestamp on the matter along with a few details. So if it was possible, I assure you, I would speak the same words to all of you while looking at, looking at you. But it's up to all of you whether or not you trash the literal hard work Mayor Vargas and Alderman Stevo put forth in not only dealing with the hospital but having to deal with me as well. I close with the idea that Blue Island needs to have a formal and codified community policing program and irrelevant of any and all elections to be known for evermore. Black club are more, are but one of the many critical components to the, to a program, but it's so much more. It's having programs so that we can, so that when someone cannot mow their lawns or shovel their locks, there is a list of individuals ready, willing and able to ensure the matter doesn't go into financial penalties from the city or from the pain of falling in a slippery walk. It's having important information make it to every doorstep irrelevant of internet access or politics. It's about having tough conversations about painful topics out in the open and actively working on developing means and methods to deter, detect and defend against what causes the pains. It's about all of this and so much more. Many of these components exist, but too many whatevers seem to keep, keep everyone charged with it, in my opinion. So again, thank you Mayor Vargas and Alderman Stevo for not dismissing or deleting my communications with you. Hopefully you all, hopefully you'll both have a direct phone number by the time this letter is read with our one lone voice in Blue Island taking the holiday and off for more.
Randy, I got Nancy said she's listed as an attendee.
You heard, is she on the galaxy, galaxy? She should be in though. Next we got from Emily Meyer. Dear Mr. Hoiser, I'm writing this comment in regards to the citizen-driven cleanup movement that has been growing in support and participation since the beginning of summer. Many of us are out multiple times for we cleaning the major thoroughfares of Blue Island in addition to our own blackened neighborhoods. Though I cannot pretend to speak for everyone above, I can say that is, it is something I'm happy to do. I bought my house in Blue Island. I made a commitment to the city and I will continue to invest in it in any way I can. There are three areas that could use the city councils assistance in addressing. One, would it be possible to include a note with the monthly water bills that includes a reminder regarding Blue Island's trash collection policy? By this, I mean the citizens of Blue Island can call public works to pick up their larger items such as old mattresses and furniture and they will do so at no additional cost. Perhaps disseminating this information more will stop people from dropping such items on the Henry Road, Hundred Thirty First Street as well as starting room. It might take a few days, but it's free. Better sit on the curb for two days and sleep for months. Two, holding businesses accountable for their own trash. Good gravy. Has there been talk as to the amount of trash picked up on Hundred Twenty Seventh Western, excuse, Hundred Twenty Seventh between Western and Vincent and Gregory? While these businesses are not solely responsible for the amount of trash on the streets, it seems to me that by assigning employee lack duty, there will be, there were, lack duty where there, there would be out to clean the parking lots once or twice a day could go a long way toward remedying the situation. As would analyzing their dumpster schedules to ensure things are not overflowing. Speaking of which, if many businesses could just close their dumpsters, it would make it a lot harder for birds and non-avian animals to get in there and pull trash them. I don't know what the solution is for monitoring this, but I am hoping you might, you all might have an idea. Three. Finally, is there a good place for the citizens of the game of street cleaning cleaners? So street cleaners to put up the garbage they collect. Where do we put the garbage? Seems to be a regular question as the home is typically out of the question. While we are lucky that businesses like Three Sisters and Blue Island Beer Company generously provide what space they may have, sometimes it's not enough. Trying to sneak a bag or two into dumpsters can be quite an experience like when you meet an unhappy business owner. Public workers also not found a, find of a previous attempt. I'm asking if there might be a place the council can appoint for the location of a public dumpster for those who are cleaning the streets. Thank you for your time. Sorry, this was so long. Sincerely, Emily Monir.
Randy, can you hear me now?
Yes, I got you Nancy.
Randy?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, thanks.
Bert is David Johnson. One of Blue Island's greatest strengths is the can-do spirit of our residents who come together from all backgrounds to take on task to better the community. However, it's troubling that the informal citizen meetups to clean up litter and trash in that community have recently had to expand to include not only public areas but also private property. Blue Island residents can't chip in to help keep our public ways clear and lighten the load on our public work scrubs. But the public cannot issue citations to private property owners who fail to uphold their duties, particularly some of the commercial landmarks along Borough and Western. Many of whose properties are regular offenders with excessive littering. Please ensure that all arms of Blue Island government, both the administration and city council are working together to uphold their responsibilities in the effort to keep Blue Island clean and beautiful by holding private property owners accountable for litter. Additionally, please consider ways to better control or monitor some of the public places that accumulate a lot of litter. For example, closing the parking lots by the train station and waterfall overnight, which are often used as gathering spots with lots of trash left behind. Thank you. Lastly, Carol Green. The other Blue Island, Blue Island Strong, this is a fan card, August twenty-twenty donors. Blue Island Mayor Domingo Vargas, Blue Island City Clerk Randy Hoiser, Alderman William Cazars, Alderman Johnny Hill, Alderman Dexter Johnson, Alderman Alan Stevo, Blue Island City Attorney Kerry Horvath, Sonji Brooks, Angelo Green, Dexter Johnson Junior, Patty Maroney, Blue Island Public Library, Captain Lee Acosta, Blue Island Salvation Army, Eisenhower High School, Lopez Tire, Marshall Lee and the Tommy Lee Memorial Fund, Patty Fellowess from Patty's Grooming and the brainstorming warehouse who donate to our August thirteenth event. Thank you for, to our many volunteers and the Blue Island Police Officer Jerry, Jeremy Rhodes for setting up the barricade. Hashtag together, together hashtag Blue Island Strong distribute face masks, gloves, hand sanitizer and food at Eisenhower High School Saturday, September twelfth, twenty-twenty from ten thirty AM to twelve thirty PM while supplies last. All are welcome to pick up, donate, volunteer or share information. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to number six, report of city officials. Under the mails, mayor's announcements, let me relay a belated happy Labor Day again to all workers. Especially, especially all essential workers and frontline workers, not only from our city, but all around us and family members. Secondly, I want to thank all volunteers that you've heard who continue to clean up our city, who use their spare time to beautify and clean our neighborhoods, our community. Their actions are those wonders rather than their words. As you be seeing, you're seeing a lot of renovation on Western Avenue. You'll be seeing some renovation on some of the storefronts within the next couple of weeks. Additionally, you're being, you'll be seeing the demolition and remediation of Hundred Nineteenth and Vincent. I want all of us again to continue following the CDC and the governor's regulations regarding COVID nineteen. It's critical that we continue following that or else we're gonna fall back, especially now that we're gonna be entering the flu season. I want to welcome all our children, both young and old, back to school. Unfortunately, even though it's e-learning or virtual classrooms, they're back and we, and we want to wish them a very prosperous and good school year in the near future. Progress continues on the Western Avenue Bridge as you see. The girders have gone up on the southbound lanes and they will continue working on that and they're doing exceptional progress on that. The near completion of the Cal Sac Trail and hopefully you will join us once they open it to ride it from, from end to end. We're working right now for an October date for the, that committee for the summit, which it's like six community members from our community. So that we're shooting for the October day for that meeting. Again, we have to think about, and this is, you don't have to give an answer now, about Halloween in Blue Island. Next, Census twenty-twenty. Again, this is very, and I can't stress it enough, this is a very important topic. Without that federal funding and without our numbers, we're not gonna get the money that we deserve and we deserve it not only for our schools, but for our infrastructure. So again, I encourage all the aldermen and the committee has done a phenomenal job, but they need more assistance to get the numbers out there for, for the Census twenty-twenty. Let's not forget nine eleven, that anniversary is coming up, not a couple of days from now. And then I want to thank the Blue Island Police Department and all volunteers for locating Ms. Margaret who was missing yesterday and they recovered her. So she's fine and doing well. She was found around Hundred and Fifteenth and Bishop in the city of Chicago. Can you still hear me? Randy? Okay. Next, regarding the appointment of zoning board of appeals for the chairman, Kimberly Byrne. I don't know if I need a vote on that or we just need to announce it.
You need a vote on that mayor.
Okay, so that's my suggestion for appointment for chairman of Kimberly Byrne. So I need a motion in a second.
I'm Fernwald.
I second a motion.
Alright, if no questions, I'll need a roll call please.
Hazenus.
Hi.
Hazenus, hi. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Fernwald.
Hi.
Fernwald, hi. Hill.
No.
Hill, no. Mac.
No.
Mac, no. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Zelman.
No.
Zelman, no. Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi. Stevo.
Hi.
Stevo, hi. Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi. Bellato.
I'm gonna be an I, but I have a question. Was anybody else on the board that seniority? What happened to girlfriend? I'd like to know. He's done that.
No, you know what? We, Alderman, we asked and nobody other than her volunteered to be the chairman.
So all the members have been asked.
That, that's the right issue we've been having.
Alright, I have no issue with Kim. I'm an I, like I said. I just was wondering Cliff was on there for decade. More than ten years, right? The mayor, I think he's been there. He's done a great job.
Well, yeah, he did, but he, due to health issues with his wife, he had a leave.
Okay, I'm an I.
That, that's the reason why. That's the reason why.
Bellato, hi. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, i's. And one, two, three, five, no.
Alright, thank you. We'll move on to a proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas in two thousand and three, World Water Monitoring Day was established by the American Clean Water Foundation as a global educational outreach program aiming to build public awareness and involvement in protecting water resources around the world by empowering citizens to carry out basic monitoring of their local water bodies. And whereas in two thousand and six, following a number of years of severe weather horrific deadly hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, droughts, typhoons, cyclones, earthquakes and tsunamis, environmentalists from Blue Island, Beverly and the far south side came together to pray for the planet Earth on the banks of the Cal Sac Canal. And whereas that call to action inspired the blessings of the waters in Blue Island. And whereas led by the late Reverend Ron Reinhardt of Saint Joseph's, Saint Aiden's Episcopal Church in Blue Island and Tom Shepherd, then president of the Southeast Environmental Task Force, an annual ritual began to bless the waters. Heal the river, which was the following year, moved to the waterfall in Blue Island at the Water Reclamation District aeration facility on the Cal Sac Channel. And whereas after more than thirteen years, the tradition of the interfaith there prayer to heal and renew the environment continues today. And the fourteenth annual ceremony will be held in Blue Island on Sunday, September the twentieth, twenty-twenty at three PM. And whereas we join Earth Echo International in September as we celebrate World Water Monitoring Day, September the eighteenth, to connect to water resources and inspire action. And now therefore I, Domingo Vargas, mayor of the city of Blue Island, do hereby proclaim September the eighteen, twenty-twenty is World Water Monitoring Day. And we recognize it, recognize the fourteenth blessing of the waters in the city of Blue Island. And I'm gonna add, need a motion in a second and then roll call.
Bellato makes some.
Thank you.
Oh, in a second.
Thank you very much. Roll call, city clerk.
Hey. Hazenus. Cuz it is.
Hi.
Cuz it is, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Farenwald.
Hi.
Farenwald, hi. Hill.
Hi.
Hill, hi. Meck.
Hi.
Meck, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Zelman.
Hi.
Zelman, hi. Clinker.
Hi.
Clinker, hi. Sevo.
Hi.
Sevo, hi. Alexander.
Hi.
Alexander, hi. Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi. Thirteen i's.
Thank you very much, uh, for your information. Uh, Albert Resick was sworn in as a full-time patrol officer this morning. Uh, and then I'll move on to number five. We'll need a motion for approval for number five, and it reads as follows. Effective September the ninth, twenty twenty, the city of Blue Island will terminate the services of Ackerman LLP and Montana Welsh LLC. Final payment will be made for any properly authorized services provided by both firms through that date upon presentation of detailed invoices.
I'll make a motion.
I would need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion, I'd like to amend, uh, mayor, but I make a motion, but I'd like to amend.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make amendment, um, to this motion based on cleaning the slate. I'd like to add, Odelson Stirk, Murphy Frager, McGrath LTD, along with Montana Welsh and Ackerman, all three law firms, clean the slate, eliminate all three. Have yourself, mayor, pick a firm, there's other firms that are out there, Ansel Glink, uh, Kleintorpe and Jenkins, which actually was founded in Blue Island. Any other firm that would eliminate the divisiveness of having Odelson and Stirk as the main city attorney. So I'm making a motion to amend, to clean the slate, eliminate all these firms, and pick a firm of your choosing.
Mayor, that motion is out of order.
I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done.
Excuse me.
Attorney, I'm not done.
You have the authority to appoint the city attorney, which you have done. That motion is out of order. It is an attempt to remove from your authority, remove from your power the authority to appoint the city attorney.
I said any firm-
And you're actually a temporary appointment, Mr. Horvath, still, you've never been approved by the full city council, two days.
A motion's made and seconded, I think we need a roll call, and the mayor can do what he wants, he could pick any firm, I'm not saying so-and-so firm, any except the ones that work with the city currently.
May I, uh-
There's no political division, there's no- There's no political division, there's, it's, it's a clean slate, he could pick anybody he wants, just not any firm that currently works for the city.
The motion is out of order, mayor.
Amendment, uh, ever put forward on attorney business.
I'd like to make a motion to override the ruling of the chair.
I'll second override.
I second-
Mayor, the motion is out of order, it's an improper motion, it cannot be made, it cannot be seconded, and it cannot be voted on.
Okay, let's do this, let's take it off. Let's take it off. Is that agreeable?
You're taking the whole number five off, or are you asking for a-
Oh, hold on, let me just, hold on, could I just say something here? All right. And I asked for it to be put on the agenda tonight. Um, if indeed Alderman Bellato's amendment is not in order, then I, my motion stands. And I need a second.
I would second. We have a motion and a second already on the floor, we need a roll call, I don't care what the attorney says or not, procedures are, motions made and seconded, we need a roll call to eliminate all-
The chair, the chair has ruled the amendment to the motion out of order, it's an improper motion. It is an attempt to change the, the government, the form of government in the city of Blue Island, it's also an attempt to remove from the mayor his power to appoint an attorney, which he has already exercised. If you wanna, you wanna remove us as the city attorney, the proper way to do so.
Kerry, I'm not attacking Kerry, I'm just making a fact, we didn't ask for this motion to put on there, Alderman Farenwald asked to put it on there. I'm not disagreeing with some ports of this motion, I'm asking to just clean the slate, you cannot say-
I'm saying, I am saying the amendment is out of order, and I stated the reasons, and the mayor has determined that it is out of order.
I understand. Motion, motion over.
This is why we need to-
The city attorney was never confirmed by the full city council. He's had multiple opportunities, there's no reason why we should have legal bills every month for fifty thousand dollars when we're a municipality under twenty-five thousand people. It's been out of control, it's been out of control for a long time. And I, I hundred percent agree with Alderman Bellato's motion, let's clean the slate, this, the decisiveness isn't fighting with the mayor and the city council, it's the city council fighting with Odelson and Stirk. There's no reason why we need to have two, where there's no reason why we need to have two city attorneys attend meetings, attend committee meetings when you're never asked, have them perform work that our very capable city staff can be doing at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, it's, it's out of control. And this is, this is an opportunity to start over and start fresh. Motion's made and seconded.
First of all, you have an, you have an obligation, you have an obligation to the residents of the city as well as the remainder of the city council to tell the truth. The bills are not fifty thousand dollars a month, and you know that, second-
I don't wanna dilute, I don't wanna dilute the argument here.
No, he, he made a statement which is totally incorrect.
I want that to eliminate the, eliminate everybody. How can, we're not picking sides here, we're eliminating anybody, we're not even recommending another firm, it could be anybody else. Like I said-
You do not have that authority to do so in the manner in which you are attempting to do so. And I'm informing the mayor and the city council-
Then, there was a motion made and a second to overrule the chair, Odelson, I mean, made a motion and there's a second to overrule the chair.
Mayor, we need to start getting along.
Motion and then attempt to ramrod it through by trying to overrule the chair, that is highly improper. It is not in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. And you don't, you cannot do that, aside from the fact, aside from the fact that the mayor has the power to appoint and the power to remove the city attorney. That is by statute, Alderman, there is nothing in the statute-
Hundred percent, we're asking anybody but your firm. That's all we're asking, anybody but your firm, or Montana Welsh, or Ackerman, clean the slate, anybody except those three firms, anybody.
Alderman, you can't ask to do something illegal just because you think it's appropriate in your mind.
For this motion to be put on the agenda, attorney, and I don't wanna argue with the attorney.
I didn't put it on the agenda either, Alderman Farenwald asked to put it on the agenda, he made the motion.
That, that must be nice, there's been times, there's been times when other aldermen ask for stuff, Kerry, and you say no, many times.
Alderman, I rarely say no to anything.
The agenda, Mr. Horvath.
I rarely say no to anything that goes on the agenda. I, I only say no when it's inappropriate, and you know this is inappropriate. You, there is nothing in the statute in the state of Illinois which allows for a removal to be conducted in this fashion. Only the mayor has the authority to ask for a removal of an appointed official. If he wants to do so, he can do so, and then you can vote on it. But you can't just raise it as an amendment to a motion which is-
And on the agenda,
which was put on the agenda by a fellow alderman, if you wanna vote no on the motion, you can do that, but the remainder of what Alderman Bellato was suggesting is inappropriate, you cannot do that.
You have a right as the attorney to draft a memo to the mayor after we make this roll call, and then you can say the illegal stance you want. This is inappropriate that you're sticking your nose into an alderman's elected voice of a-
Oh, I'm not, I'm sticking it into a legal matter, you are attempting to violate the law, that's what you're trying to do.
Clean and take the politics out of the attorneys. Mayor, just, just remove him as city attorney, that would, that would stop all this. And then we'll agree with- Anybody who wants, anybody. If he removes Odelson as city attorney, we will gladly vote to remove these other two law firms. Exactly, I think that's what Alderman Bellato's saying, fair is fair. Any other firm in the, the whole country you could pick, any firm, we said the same thing when they were appointed, any firm, any other firm, this firm has represented the city in matters that have, have deep-
Temporary.
To residents, they do not want this firm as the city affirming, there's a small bubble that likes this firm, there's a majority that does not like this firm, we are trying to represent our constituents, remove attorneys, and hire another firm that has nothing to do with any of the three working for the city. Go off the bit if you want.
May I please speak? May I please speak?
Go ahead, go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you. This is my motion. Uh, I've sat here for, I don't know, ten minutes and listened to a lot of screaming and yelling, and this problem that we have. I think it's pretty obvious that there is politics going on here.
I have a question.
We don't need to pretend like there isn't, because we wanna remove all the attorneys, that's just another political move, quite obviously.
No, it's not, it's just clean the slate, all the attorneys, so there's no politics involved, anybody can be picked, anybody.
I like, speak, let me speak, then you can speak, all right, how about it, is that fair?
Everybody's been talking over each other, I think the mayor needs to call the roll like there was motion that was made, we did not put this on the agenda, we're trying to, we're agreeing with two thirds of this agenda.
I put, and I put this on the, I put this on the agenda, requested it to be put on the agenda, and specifically not to remove Odelson and Stirk, so this is in no way in the spirit of this motion at all. Odelson and Stirk is a perfectly qualified, well-qualified, done an excellent job.
And so has Montana Welsh, and so is Ackerman, but I'm not even arguing with Ackerman, Montana Welsh also is a perfectly qualified attorney. I'm not arguing any of their qualifications, I think Attorney Horvath has done a great job as an attorney, all right, but I do not want the firm working for the city. That is my opinion, that's the opinion of the majority of the council. Pick a non-political firm, that has nothing to do with the city.
Alderman, if your position is valid, you will not need to just shout over me all the, you'll let me speak and then you'll speak, how about that, is that fair?
We can try it, we can try it, Alderman Farenwald, 'cause I agree with two thirds of this motion, I wanna see roll call completed.
All right, let me-
On the agenda, I did not put this on the agenda, Alderman.
This is Alderman Rita.
Let me speak, hold on, I have the-
This is Alderman Rita, I have a question for Mr. Horvath.
Now, let me speak, Alderman Rita, then you can ask your questions. This is, this is a motion I put, I requested have put on the agenda.
Okay.
And there are plenty of good reasons for it. Primarily because, as I said, Odelson Stirk representing the city's interests in every way that I have witnessed them in action. Um, I'm not, you know, impugning the re- reputation of Montana Welsh or Ackerman, uh, that's not the point of this at all. It's just that we need to speak with one voice, and Odelson and Stirk is our city attorney. We have run up, we, we appropriated, as you probably recall, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, for legislative services in the appropriation, and we knew at the, I mean, I knew at the time that wasn't certainly gonna be sufficient to cover, uh, the year's, uh, activity, no matter what. But now, because we have two firms, we are at like a hundred and forty-nine thousand and nine hundred dollars or something against that appropriated amount as, uh, according to a memo, August twenty-eighth, to the finance committee from our, uh, city.
Ninety, ninety-five percent of it's from Odelson and Stirk.
And that's appropriate, it should be a hundred percent, it should be a hundred percent. Um-
It's actually, it's actually two thirds, Alderman, and you know that.
Exactly right, it is, oh, you know, let's be, let's be honest about what it is, but it oughta be a hundred percent. And, uh, I just think it's time to clear this out. And I know that there are some ill feelings towards Odelson and Stirk, and, you know, I'm sorry about that, but that's, I don't frankly care about that. I really don't, I care about that the city should have the best representation it can have, and Odelson and Stirk is as good as it gets from yours, from everything that I've seen them work on. So I is to, uh, clean it up, as you said, Alderman Bellato. Uh, put, uh, Odelson Stirk back in the position where everything is run through one firm so that there is no confusion, no dupli- no duplication, and we aren't spending our time, you know, arguing about stuff which is pointless. There's only, uh, you know, frankly, there's a thing coming, of course, in April, and things are gonna, whatever, something's gonna change at that point. So I think it's appropriate that we, uh, you know, just let them do what they're doing. Uh, rather than have a lot of, of, um, you know, time spent trying to find a new law firm, uh, all of, you know, lose continuity on a whole bunch of things that are currently, uh, in the works, and I, you know, there's some very important that are being handled. And I don't see the point in making a change right now, when whatever happens in April, if there's a change, then, fine, the people can speak. Uh, but right now, I don't think that's appropriate, uh, so I, my motion stands as I put it up.
Alderman, Alderman Farenwald, the last bill for Montana Welsh was six hundred dollars, all right? We wanna just keep it along till April, depending what happens, what happens. Again, we put this motion on the agenda, I just wanna clear the slate, take the politics out of it. Remember the first night that they were appointed, I made this statement during public session and afterwards, that any other firm, and you would've had my vote, do you remember that, that conversation? Any other firm, all right, and that most of the council, along with my constituents, there's a lot of personal feelings, they want a change. That's why Domingo Vargas elected, he was supposed to be the change, and different firm was needed. I'm not agreeing with whatever firm was here, uh, when he first got elected, but we didn't want the firm that was here with the previous administration. Majority of people did not want the firm that was here before. So again, we're representing our constituents, any other firm in the entire city. Kleintorpe and Jenkins, I just keep bringing this up because they represented the city for a hundred years, a hundred years. All right, they're another municipal firm, pick any firm, I just use them because, again, they were founded in town and I'm a history guy. But any firm, there's a lot of firms that do municipal law, take the politics out of it, I never stipulated, uh, eliminate these three firms, but hire this firm, any firm, it's the mayor's appointment, I never tried taking away his authority to appoint a firm. Make the politics out of it, so we're not having these conversations anymore, any other firm, and that's exactly what I said that night, which you agreed to, it's the same So that's all I'm asking, is that we eliminate all three firms, and the mayor can pick whoever he wants.
Alderman Bellato-
Your statement.
What if he picks Odelson and Stirk, which he would be perfectly entitled to do?
I said, no firm doing business with the city currently. Any firm that's not doing business with the city current, currently.
Choice, it's not, it's not your decision, it's not my decision, it's the mayor's choice as to who the city attorney is. And I, I don't know, he wouldn't just reappoint them, frankly.
I stated my opinion, I just wanted to-
All right, this is Alderman Rita.
On the agenda.
Take a vote for Odelson and Stirk. Then let's take a vote for Odelson and Stirk.
This is, this is Alderman Zelman, it seems like every city council meeting, all we're doing is arguing over the lawyers.
Yes, you're right.
That is crazy.
I agree. That's why it should stop. So why don't we vote on this, and, because that's, I want this voted on. I don't wanna sit here and argue about it, I just wanna vote on it.
I agree, I made amendments.
I think, I think Alderman Sevo wants to say something, this, Alderman Sevo, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, thank you, mayor, uh, with Ackerman LLP and Montana Welsh, I think enough city monies have been wasted. And, uh, the money would have been better spent, perhaps, investigating the Robbie Silva accident and why the police department cost the city millions, and investigate the death of the Calum Mattelship Trustee, Carlos Sogado, thank you.
Just because you didn't agree with what they were doing doesn't mean it was wasted energy and money. We're still looking for answers regarding the Tahoe, even though we're being said, there's been investigated by the FBI, hell, I could say that to anybody. That doesn't mean it's being done until we receive proof and evidence that it is being done, so no, that money was not wasted.
If I might just-
And, and this is Alderman Clinker, can I say something real quick, as, as far as the Robbie Silva case goes, as far as the Robbie Silva case goes in investigating our officers, I have an email response from the mayor that he's turned that over to the FBI and they're looking into it, so that was not-
That is correct.
There was no extra funds needed to spend on that, because that's one of the questions that I've been asking at Mr. Sevo's request for probably close to six or eight months. I can forward the email if you like, Mr. Sevo, but it is being investigated by the FBI, according to the mayor.
And Alderman Alexander, our attorney-
Go ahead.
Has confirmed to us that, uh, the Tahoe investigation is underway, so I mean, it has been confirmed, and so there's no need for, there's certainly no need to retain Ackerman any further. They've not been able to produce any information we didn't already have, it's like thirteen thousand dollars down the drain. Um, that, just no need for them to go on.
Had the mayor cooperated like he said he would, we wouldn't even be having this conversation right now, and you can go back to that meeting where he says that he will cooperate with whatever the council wants, and then he just decided to lawyer up and not cooperate. So had we not, had he cooperated like he said he would've, we wouldn't have had to spend a dime with Ackerman or anyone else.
I don't believe-
Like he said, that he would, if anyone put them in writing, I know I personally did it before I was Alderman, and emailed the list of twenty-eight questions, I've gotten no response.
Alderman Clinker, I don't disagree with you, my point just is, we're not gonna learn anything, I didn't think we were gonna learn anything, we haven't learned anything. And whether, you know, whose fault that is, you know, I'm not gonna argue without you about that. But we're, there's just no, we could, we, you know, you do the same thing over again and you expect a different result, there's a definition for that.
Yep, and well, the one thing we did learn, Bill, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we did learn from Ackerman that there was, was, or possibly still is, an actual investigation going on, we learned that from, I, I, I'm gonna say a credible source, okay? Because all we had going on before that was the mayor saying it's being investigated, I talked to some people, and he couldn't tell us who he talked to. So now we did learn that from Ackerman. So now we did learn that from Ackerman. So we did learn some concrete evidence, whether it's worth what we spent on it or not, is everyone's opinion, okay? But we did learn something from that, and that's something that I took out of the meeting where Mr. Acosta talked to us.
Okay, I'll grant you that for sure.
All right, so we have a motion. My suggestion is we have a motion. Let's
Wait.
Get a decision on this, and then I can give an, a ruling or my decision as to lawyers, whether I get rid of all of them or I keep one within the next, before the next city council meeting.
Mayor, I agree. And we made a motion. There's a second amendment. Let's do the roll call. At that point, you decide to do whatever you want to do, then it's another day and we can discuss it down, down the road at another day. There was a.
Hold on.
Made in second.
Mayor, I'm advising you again, and I'm advising the city council. The amendment is an attempt to.
I agree.
Illegal act. It's an attempt to, it's an.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do a, we're gonna do a roll call on the present motion.
Okay, because it's an attempt to avoid the provisions of the Illinois State Statute, the municipal code, as they pertain to and concern removal of appointed officials, as well as your power and authority to appoint a city attorney.
And we're not going to violate that. So we're going to move on Alderman Farinwall's motion, and they can deny it and take it out and go forward. So I'll need a roll call.
This is Alderman Rita. I have a question. This is Alderman Rita. I have a question for Mr. Horvath.
Roll call.
Hello?
So we have a motion by Alderman Farinwall, and who will second for the motion as presented in the agenda? Who's the second?
He goes, Stevo.
Holly said second, I'm sorry. So the, the motion is.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Horvath, Mr. Horvath, when the mayor makes an appointment, do the city council vote on it?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
When the mayor, I'm sorry, when the mayor makes an appointment, do the city council vote on it?
Read it correctly.
I'm sorry, Alderman. I'm having difficulty understanding what your question is. I can, I can.
I can't hear all of it. Could you repeat it one more time, Alderman?
Do the city council vote on it?
She said, when the mayor makes.
Can you hear me now?
When the mayor makes an appointment, does the city council vote on it?
Generally speaking, yes.
Then why when the mayor.
And then I continue on a month to month.
So there's a mayor, there's a motion to second on the original motion to, for approval of.
Right.
Number five that's stated on the agenda.
Right, roll call please.
So I, I have a question of clarity then. So we're ignoring the motion to amend, the motion to second to the amendment. We made a, we're ignoring the motion to overrule the chair. We're going to go back to the original motion, which is what's on the agenda. So I just want to make sure everybody knows, because there's a lot of stuff out there on both sides. This is a motion to eliminate Montana Welsh and Ackerman with no amendments, with no no regard to the open rules of Robert's Rules of Order or our own internal rules. We're going to go back to number five. So we're not clearing the slate. We're not taking politics out of it. We're going to keep Alderson and Stirk, but get rid of Montana Welsh. Is that clarified?
That is the motion, that is the motion that is properly before the city council this evening, yes.
I'd like the Legislative Council to be recognized. I believe he's muted.
He's not muted.
Mayor, you have the right to call, call for the vote.
Go ahead, roll call.
Casidus.
So I'd like to say that the clerk is ignoring, I mean, Randy, I'm calling you out because you're the clerk. We made a motion to amend, motion to second it, and also to overrule the chair. We did not take a roll call.
The, the motion to amend is an illegal motion, and it's an attempt to avoid the requirements of Illinois statute.
It's your attorney, Mr. Horvath.
Be made by the city council.
It's your attorney, Mr. Horvath.
You are attempting to avoid the law. That is what you are doing, Alderman Bolado.
I recommend, I recommend.
And I'm not going to allow the city council to do that.
Since this is not a democratic process and the majority does not have a say, I would say vote no against this motion. It just doesn't make any sense. We're not being heard. We're not keeping politics out of it. We're not cleaning the slate. We're keeping a, a political friendly firm on the payroll and eliminating other firms. So it's one-sided. I'm in favor of eliminating everybody, everybody. Make it very clear. So I would vote no against this motion then.
All right, next.
I wish, I wish you guys, I wish you guys had the same vigor. I wish you had the same vigor when you guys were getting rid of the island bar against Alderson and Stirk. I wish you had the same vigor you have now.
Roll call please.
I would like to recognize the Judiciary of Council.
You know what? My.
To speak.
Do you hear me?
Yes, I hear you, ma'am.
Judiciary of Council has no, no voice in this particular matter, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Horvath, you're completely wrong. Just stop, all right?
No, I'm not completely wrong.
You are, Mr. Horvath, you are completely wrong, to the extent you're saying I have no role.
You called the role, you called the role on the motion.
Roll call please. Roll call, roll call.
Politics as usual here. Thank you, Mr. Farinwall, for putting this on the agenda. Politics as usual. I'm in favor of clearing the slate, eliminating all these attorneys, and hiring a nonpartisan firm. So I would.
Alderman Farinwall, you're the only one playing in politics. You're the one who put this on the agenda and played this whole game. We didn't have to have this fight tonight, but again, this was all, this was all you, Alderman Farinwall, just like the last meeting. Thank you for continuing the politics.
Alderman, respectfully.
Alderman Farinwall, I believe you're trying to grandstand to further your political agenda.
Okay.
Alderman.
Mayor, you should call the roll and call the roll and have the vote on Alderman Farinwall's motion so this matter can move forward. Or this meeting can move forward.
Casidus was a no. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
So this is not a political vote on my part, and anyone who says so should know better, based on my record. I'm interested, the politics at all.
Yes, you're in the know.
I am only interested in having the best attorney represent us that we can. At the time that I voted to initially approve Alderson and Stirk, I did so over the strong objections of your sponsor. All about, and it needs to be made real clear that this is the ugly, ugly politics we're looking at tonight. Real ugly. So don't tell me.
Oh, brother.
We're in a roll.
Break.
Mayor, the.
Roll call.
You're still, you're the only one with the politics.
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Continue the roll call, please.
Farinwall.
Continue the roll call, Mayor.
Roll call.
Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Hill.
No.
Hill, no. Meck.
No.
Meck, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Zilman.
No.
Zilman, no. Klinker.
No.
Klinker, no. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Bolado.
We didn't put this on the agenda. I'm a no. And I want to take politics, and I was a bigger person to amend this, to eliminate my own attorney that I like, okay? I'm a no.
Bolado, no. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, four, four ayes and ten noes.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, any business?
No business.
Any bids?
No bids.
City Treasurer, we got the monthly treasurer's report. I guess I'll, I need a motion on that one, correct? Motion in second.
Bolado makes a motion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Donahue, second.
Thank you very much. No questions. Roll call, please.
Casidus.
Aye.
Casidus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado.
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Now we'll move to number two of the treasurer's section, approval of inter-fund transfers from unrestricted and restrictive accounts. I need a motion in a second.
Donahue moves to approve.
Second it, Bolado.
If there's no questions, roll call, please.
Aye.
Casidus.
Aye.
Casidus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado. Bolado, aye. Twelve ayes and two noes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the cash collection receipts report, and then there's no treasurer's announcements. City Attorney, any business?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Community reports, Community Development Committee.
Mayor, Community Development, met. We have two ordinance to bring forward to the council's pleasure. Number one, ordinance number 2020-032, an ordinance granting a parking variation in the Blue Island zoning in 1964 Vermont Street, Blue Island, Illinois. This is for the old. I can't think of the name right now, but it's the northeast corner of Vermont and Division. They're asking for another restaurant to be put in there. This one, it's actually being put in by the owner of the property. There's a couple of stipulations that came out of the zoning board. The biggest one would be parking. They agreed to allow them to use valet parking for the Fulton Street lots. However, in six months, it'll be reviewed by the zoning board. So that's my first ordinance on recommendation.
Okay, you, you make the mo, you're making the motion, correct?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Alderman Casidus.
Thank you very much. If no questions, roll call, please.
Nancy, I need you to unmute. Casidus.
Aye.
Casidus, aye. Rita. Nancy, you have to unmute. Go ahead.
No. No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly.
And sorry, Randy, I got, I read it myself before I get to finish. I'm, I'm voting no because of past issues with the former business and parking issues and just overall in general. So just wanted to explain my no vote on that. Thank you.
Okay. Holly was an aye.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado.
I, with the same stipulation, I actually logged into this meeting of the zoning board and much discussion was made over the parking because, again, I only have one corner of this intersection, but it was a parking issue for myself also. And they can pull the license in six months if they are having the same issues as previous. They were told over and over again by myself, other members of the zoning board, Sanders School is not an option. Saint Anadis is not an option. Parking in the neighborhood is not an option. So hopefully the zoning board holds tight to pull license if it has become an issue in six months. So I'm voting aye based on the stipulations that was put into the contract.
Got it. Thank you.
Bolado, aye. Twelve ayes and two noes.
Thank you very much. Next.
All right, second ordinance we have is 2020-033, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special use permit to Taylor Ali's Yad to permit the operation of an automobile body and fender shop, automobile repair shop on the premises located 12101 Southwestern Avenue, which is in a C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Again, this was debated in zoning with many stipulations added into it. And the Community Development Committee also added additional stipulations into this. This is Sound Sonic location that was across from Popeye's Chicken. Usually in the past, no vehicles were kept outside the premises. It was locked up at night. For the most part, the property was maintained. We want to continue that. So many stipulations were added. The customer has to maintain no overnight parking on the visible street sides of the property. They have to build in addition to the building to house any storage for cars overnight. They have to add lighting along the building. They need to enclose their hatch with an enclosure, and they were also offered the Business District funds to do that if they apply correctly. No overnight parking, like I said, on both business street frontages. And additional exterior lighting must be installed to the property. So it's, I'm making a motion to approve this with the additional stipulations that came out of Community Development.
So noted. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. If no questions, roll call, please.
Casidus.
Aye.
Casidus, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Just, I'm going to vote aye, and I'd like to note that I did read the, the note from the zoning board, and I felt that there was a reasonable accommodation here, so aye.
Farinwall, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado.
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Twelve ayes and two noes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have for Community Development. Next meeting is Wednesday, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items before the city council tonight. First is, I'd like to make a motion of approval for payroll for August, I think it's the 21st, in the amount of $346,571.89. I'd like to make a motion.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'd like to sec, I'd like to second it, Alderman Rita.
All right, thank you very much. If no questions, roll call, please.
Casidus.
Aye.
Casidus, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwall.
Aye.
Farinwall, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bolado.
Aye.
Bolado, aye. Fourteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, motion. I just need a motion of approval, accounts payable for September the 9th, 2020, in the amount of $546,686.12.
So you got a motion? Do we have a second? So you got a motion? Do we have a second?
Alderman Carl, second.
All right, thank you. If no questions, roll call, please.
Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fair and wild.
Aye.
Fair and wild, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander. Isn't that? You muted on that.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, twelve ayes and two noes, your honor.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, it's resolution number twenty twenty, uh, dash zero thirty-seven. It's a resolution approving and authorizing a contract with M.E. Simpson Company, Inc. for fire hydrant maintenance and flow, uh, capacity testing. As the resolution reads on our packet, that's, that's what it's for, maintenance of the fire hydrants. So this is a yearly.
Do I have, do we have a second?
Bellato, second.
Thank you. If no questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Fair and Wild, question?
Go ahead.
It, it's just a process question, uh, curious, this and the following two, uh, resolutions, uh, none of them came through municipal services committee, and I, I'm not objecting to that fact, I just would like to know the process and why they didn't come there. So Alderman, I can't speak on what other committees item three went to, but items four and five did go to community development before it went to finance. Uh, but I can't, I can't speak on why it didn't go to municipal services. Be happy if you want to table all three to go before municipal services, uh. But like I said, two of them did go to a different committee besides finance, and I, I'm just not sure what, what happened with item number three. Right. No, I looked at them and they seem reasonable. Uh, maybe just a note for, in the future, I mean, they do seem like they would be appropriate, there's something like this, would go through municipal services.
I'm sorry, Alderman, this is Alderman Carl. I think, um, the res- for, uh, M.E. Simpson would go through public safety and not through municipal services.
All right, fair enough. Anyway, I, I'm going to vote for him, but I just wanted to make that note. It just seemed like maybe they should.
Thank you very much. So we got a.
I'll, I'll remind, I'll ask DePica next time for something like this, if she could make sure it gets put on the, the municipal services agenda as well. Thank you.
We got a motion second. Roll call, please.
Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Rita. Rita. She seems to have disappeared. Um, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fair and wild.
Aye.
Fair and wild, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, let me look real quick.
Thank you.
Nancy Rita, so no, she, she's going, no. Um, thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, item number four, resolution number twenty twenty dash zero three eight. It's a resolution approving and authorizing a contract with Dero, a plague court company. Uh, my printer, like, skipped over this next line, but what these are, they're, uh, they are tire inflators that will go up on the business district for people who are using the Cal Sag Trail. Uh, I believe two will be put on Old Western, one will be put close to one hundred and nineteenth and Western, and Alderman Bellato, was it the other one closer to one hundred and twenty-seventh street?
Uh, Vermont, Vermont and Western.
Vermont and Western, got it. Uh, this is all coming out of the business district, and what, again, the hopes are, if someone does need to do some work on their bike, they'll, they'll stop, they'll, they'll work on it, and maybe stop into one of our restaurants or businesses and, and buy a beer, buy a sandwich to, to help stimulate our local economy. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Bellato, second.
Motion, the, the second, thank you very much. If no questions, roll call, please.
Casadus.
Yeah, I got, Alderman, I got a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Alder.
So how, how much are we spending on, on the, um, bike stations?
Total amount for the four, I think, are under five thousand dollars.
Actually, it's just over, it's like five thousand. About five grand, and that's for somebody to repair, for somebody to repair their bike.
Yes, they're common in other areas, like Lamont's got multiple ones throughout their main street. And the idea was shot to us by several constituents that are bikers of the trail, and at least two businesses have reached out to community development. Lower priced of the two companies we got quotes from.
Thank you.
Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fair and wild.
Aye.
Fair and wild, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
That's staying.
Johnson abstaining. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Twelve ayes and one suspension, your honor.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, uh, item number five, it's resolution number twenty twenty dash zero three nine, resolution approving and authorizing contract with Dodie and Sons Concrete Products, Inc. for town square litter receptacles. These, uh, this will be going on the business district to replace the old aluminum garbage cans that are there. The material will match what the new planners look like, and all funds are being paid out of the business district, uh, funds. Uh, again, this went through community development before finance, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Bellato, second.
Oh, uh, motion second. Alderman, one question, how soon will they replace them, do you know?
So I'll, um, Alderman Donahue, I can answer that.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Go ahead.
So I think we're about two weeks out. And I reached out to two of the people that are constantly, uh, uh, picking up garbage for their opinions. We can only go up to thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-two garbage cans. We want to spread out between one hundred and nineteenth and Old Western, so if some of the old ones carry over for a little while, we'll do that to have the maximum effect. The idea ca-
Okay.
Well, we all knew we wanted garbage cans, but the idea came from Sprint and Public Works, who would like to repurpose the old ones, the ones that are salvaged, we'll repaint them and put them in the waterfall park, put them by the train stations, put them by the parking lots, where we cannot use district funds. So there'll be more garbage cans, a lot more garbage cans after the purchase. And the reason why the company was chosen, the same company did the planners that came in at low cost, and, um, I believe anything over twenty-five thousand, but we went through all the steps anyway, finance and, uh,
Just good, just, just out of curiosity, all right. We got a motion? Do we have a second? Uh, roll call.
Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fair and wild.
Aye.
Fair and wild, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander. Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, that's it. Our next meeting is Monday, September the fourteenth at six P M.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Uh, public health and safety committee?
Uh, no report. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, the, what is it, the fifteenth, at six P M.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, municipal services committee?
Hi, yes, your honor, we met this evening. Um, I'd like to make motion on ordinance number twenty twenty oh thirty-four, an ordinance rescinding handicap parking restrictions at one twenty-seven seventeen Elm Street in the city of Blue Island, County of Cook, and Stateville, Illinois.
We got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second, Fair and wild.
Thank you very much. If no questions, roll call, please.
Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fair and wild.
Aye.
Fair and wild, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, thirteen ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
And our next meeting will be October the thirteenth at six o'clock.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman. Uh, judiciary committee?
Uh, no report, your honor. I think Alderman Rita lost her connection. We did meet
Okay.
a couple weeks ago, but she'll have all the minutes, I'm sure, at our next meeting.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll move on to number seven. Any aldermanic announcements or comments?
Yeah, this is Alderman. Yeah, this is Alderman Hill. I have a question. Yes, are we going to do something for nine eleven in Blue Island?
Uh, normally it's done by the police station, by the chief. I'll make sure she'll let us know whether we're going to do, whether they're going to do something or not. Uh, they, they did it last year. Again, it was a whole different situation. I'll make sure she, uh, the chief will let us know, like, before the end of the week.
Okay, and also, how would they handle, uh, Halloween for the kids?
You know what? Uh, instead of discussing it here, maybe you can, all, you, Alderman, can send us comments or, or suggestions. And, and then we'll see what other municipalities are doing. Some are completely, um, eliminating, other ones are just telling people to keep their lights on, whoever wants to participate, their front porch light. So maybe we can get some kind of consensus from the aldermen, from all of you.
Okay, the reason I was asking that question, because last year when I gave out candy, I made sure that there were, all the candy was sealed and also inside of plastic bags that were sealed as well.
Correct. Okay, that's fine.
Mayor, we're going to talk about that tomorrow at the COVID meeting, tomorrow morning.
All right, that's good. All right, okay. Thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
Stevo.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Alderman Zelman.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I'm getting a lot of complaints. I don't know who to address. Across the street from Demars, there is, um, those bushes. Last year, I, um, I got a bunch of kids and some community people, we cut the bushes, the, the guys cut the bushes, kids cleaned it up. They're telling me that it's really, I haven't seen it lately. It's very unsafe. So people that are going to work early in the morning or leaving work late at night, it's unsafe. So I don't know who should I address, or, I mean, I know it's kind of metro, I don't know.
I'll, you know what, ma-, uh, Alderman, I'll cut them. Since I use some landscaping, I'll, I'll give it a shape. Do you want it square or do you run them around? That's all I need to know.
Oh, I don't care.
Happy to do it.
I just don't care. I just, I can't do it because I don't have the kids. The kids are not in school, so.
I got it. I can do it. I'll ha-, I'll have it done via, by this weekend. I'll do it. All right.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Stevo?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was asking for an update as to the status of posting twenty twenty ordinances, resolutions on the website.
The ordinances are posted. Um, the resolutions will be done the next day or two.
Okay, thank you. Uh, looking at the possibility of all ordinances, resolutions, accounts payable, payroll, et cetera, be on the web, website before the city council meetings. So the, uh, residents could have a better understanding of what we're voting on.
That's fine, Alderman.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll work towards that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's, uh, Alderman Meck.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just during this meeting, I, I've gotten numerous text messages from residents of the fifth ward. Uh, there, that have overhead sewers and their homes are be, are backed up with water, uh, through their plumbing system.